Seven o'clock, September 7th, County Commission Meet will now come to order. I'm gonna call on Mr. Johnson to do the invocation.
Let's pray, please. Oh, we thank you again for the opportunity we have to come here to serve you and serve the folks in Iredell County. We pray you'd bless our proceedings, you'd give your wisdom to us, and Father, that you would monitor our hearts and that we'd take inventory of our thoughts and our actions, that they'd be in compliance with your will, that they'll benefit the folks of this county, and they bring honor to your son, the Lord Jesus, for in the name of his name we ask it, amen.
Amen. Let us stand for a pledge, ladies.
I pray, ladies, to the Father, and the United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call on Mr. Mashburn for adjustments to the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, we do have a request from the Iredell Stateful School System for an item to be added to the agenda. You did, or you should have received this in the agenda package, but after the agenda was prepared. It's a request from the Iredell Stateful Schools for approval to submit a qualified bond construction bond program application. And so, with your approval, that would be added as an agenda item. And it would be Item J. Unless you want to handle it as an appearance before the board.
Item J? You said Item J, right?
It would be Item J, unless you add it as an appearance before the board.
Okay. Any additions?
Yeah, I would, out of respect for Mr. Miller, I'd request, it won't take him long, if we just make it appearance for the board, because he's probably got more productive things to do than sit here and listen to us all night.
Okay, so you want to move that up, is what you're saying?
Yeah, out of respect to him, he can.
Okay.
That's all right. It'll take but a minute.
Okay. We'll put that right beneath the public hearing, how about that?
Okay.
That ought to work. Have any additions? Things that need to be added? Any corrections? If not, a stand for approval for motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, any questions regarding the motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed. Appointments before the board is Crossroads Behavioral Health Care Director, Mr. Davis Swan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. Hope you're all doing well today. I have prepared for you a packet of material. It is in a folder that has our 40th anniversary message on the front of it, and I'm gonna go through some of the highlights that are contained in that information this evening during the time that I have. The, of course, this is our three-county area mental health program, operates as a local management entity in the state of North Carolina, under the Department of Health and Human Services, of course, and the partnership between Iredell, Surrey, and Yadkin Counties to offer mental health, development of disabilities, and substance abuse services. We do that through a network of providers, there's about 115 of those providers now in our area that we have contracts with. I've highlighted some of the things on the front page, some of the things are the updated population, which equate to a ratio that you all see from me quite frequently, when, for the amount that you give to Crossroads for mental health services, we translate that into a per-citizen capitation rate, and that this year is $3.29. I've provided a six-year running log of that that you can see, so you can see how that has changed over the years. You also see there towards the middle, the number of persons that are served by state, Medicaid, and local funds. It was 46% of the total population that we did serve, 10,997 persons, and 5,061 were here in Iredell County as Iredell County residents. You'll also see the number of people served broken down in that graph in the middle. I think what's quite remarkable is just when you look at the amount of state money that we receive compared to the amount of Medicaid money that goes into mental health services in Iredell County, that is just below that. When you see the Medicaid funds expended for Iredell County citizens, $26,676 were expended last fiscal year by the Division of Medical Assistance on mental health services for citizens of Iredell County, compared to probably around $4 million in state money that comes through us. So there's a lot of Medicaid money that goes into mental health, and that's the lion's share. For those who've worked with me for a long time, now, you know that Medicaid has been growing while the state dollar has been descending somewhat, so that's a part of what we've seen over the time and throughout the trend. Services supported are down towards the bottom of the front page. You'll see our access to care service system, which is a 24-hour crisis response screening triage and referral call center that's based up in Elkin, and it's, of course, helping people to get access to care. The mobile crisis teams here in Iredell County, residential services for adults and children, clinical services, substance abuse services, vocational and day services, supportive services, community alternatives program, crisis and intensive services, psychiatric hospitalization, which is a new one for this year that I'll speak about. We have entered into an agreement with Davis Regional Medical Center. They are gonna be opening their 16-bed psychiatric unit beginning next week. It's already open, but it'll be open to involuntary commitments next Monday, and Crossroads has entered into a contract with them to purchase indigent beds, to the tune of about five beds per day, all the year long, and the contract is a three-year contract. I'm real excited about that. We've been working on that with Davis for, really going on five years now. Also, a housing program, which we got a big boost and shot in the arm from the Housing and Urban Development, about a month and a half ago, you might have seen the article in the Stateful Record and Landmark about the HUD grant that we received to expand housing. Wellness Action Recovery Planning, which is a recovery program, Crisis Intervention Team for law enforcement officials, and the Iredell Advocacy Academy for Substance Abuse Awareness and Recovery. On the financial summary, I'm gonna refer you to another page that has a lot of numbers on it, that has at the top of it the word "un-audited." This is our un-audited end-of-the-year budget statement. It's a white piece of paper, and it does look like that. That was an attachment to it. I'm just gonna point out a couple of things to that. One, if you go down to the bottom, I always go to the bottom line on financial reports, you will see that for the current month, that's the current month ended June 30th of 2010, we were to the good $644,042. That was just for the month. But if you look to the right, year-to-date, we were at a loss of $528,904. That was a strategic plan by our board to meet an expectation that was set for us by the North Carolina General Assembly. As you know, last year, mental health budgets were significantly cut, and they required each of the local management entities to invest a portion of their fund balance into services, and our number was $500,000. So we had a target of using $500,000 in fund balance for services, which we did, plus $28,000 extra for that. I'll just keep carrying on. If you go to page three, you'll see the summary of visits for residents in Iredell County, and I've got a three-year running comparison here, just to let you see, you really can't reduce the significant amount of state funds like the General Assembly did last year and not affect services. And so you can see with three years, you can see the dip that we took this past year, the fiscal year 2009, 2010. Essentially, we provided fewer services this past fiscal year than we did two years ago. And you will see the big year was the fiscal year 2008, 2009. Those bold numbers, like the, under the fiscal year '09, 2010, totaled 38,270 different services that were provided, and then if you compare that to the year before last, 61,071. So you see that comparison, and again, our budget was nearly $5.5 million less last year than it was prior, the year prior to that. So that was how significant that was. The services and locations are next. I think that you know about where those are, but up on Highway 21, Turnersburg Road, we, of course, have an outpatient center there. Out at the Twin Oaks Golf Course, we have a rehabilitation program. The Stateful Crisis and Recovery Center, that is our newest facility there, and then we, of course, have contracts with providers throughout the county, as I mentioned earlier. On page four, state hospital usage is something that we've been working on for five to six years now. The goal there was to reduce our use of state hospital services for many reasons. One, because it's outside the county, people have to go far to it, and in nearly 100% of the cases, they're gonna be in the custody of law enforcement officers when they go, so it's a cost to law enforcement and our county. So our goal has been to reduce that. You can look, I've put a four-year running trend here from fiscal year '06, '07, all the way to the present. Looking at the bottom numbers, you'll see 413 admissions, 377 admissions for the next year, 268 admissions for the next year, and 181 admissions for the next year. Those are all totals, and you'll see that that trend has mostly declined for Iredell County, except for that bump in the 2007, 2008 year, where we went from 204 admissions to 240, then back to 144, then down this past year to 105. So that's essentially 105 transports up to Broughton Hospital up in Morganton, but that's, of course, very, very much fewer than it was in the years prior to that, again, except for that one small bump there. I've highlighted our strategic plan here, just because I like to keep that in front of me. I keep it on my desk all the time, but the top five large-scale strategic planning elements are there for your information. I have presented that strategic plan last year to this board. Our board adopted that in June of 2009. It's a three-year strategic plan, so we just finished the first year of it, and we're well on our way in the second year. There's a lot of new and expanded services coming on in Iredell County for 2010. I have highlighted them in bullet fashion there at the bottom of page four. We have expanded our access screening, triage, and referral capacity to include contracts, actually, with the Pathways Program, which is just to the south of us. It includes Cleveland, Gaston, and Lincoln Counties. Also, what that I forgot to put in here, because it started, actually, back in the early spring, but we have a contract now with Wake County, the largest county in the state, to provide after-hours screening, triage, and referrals. So in the evening time, we are now taking the calls for Wake County. The revenue from contracts like that helps to support our program, that, which also has received budget cuts the last two years to the administration. So this year, we did receive a budget reduction to the administration, and last year, we received about the same amount, for a total of about a half a million dollars rounded there. So with that kind of a loss, we were looking for ways to do this, and we do that service very well, so the other counties were interested in us doing that for them. And all these calls ring right up in Elkin with that 24/7 number. The second bullet's about Davis Regional, I've already mentioned that. We're excited about that on September the 13th. We appreciate our partnership with Davis, value them highly, and we're looking forward to keeping more people closer to home and providing hospital-based services. We engaged a community survey in the past month to help guide an expansion of services as the state legislature has restored some funding that was reduced last year. We launched a second Iredell Substance Abuse Advocacy Academy just last month down in Troutman, and we have 17 people engaged who will be working all year long in that project. We're excited about that. We have an emerging partnership between Mitchell Community College and Crossroads to provide crisis intervention team training to law enforcement professionals that would get college credit for taking it from the campus there at Mitchell. And the System of Care Project, that's also been initiated with Mitchell Community College to establish a community resource portal, and then a reclaiming futures grant that is to enhance services for court-involved young people that are also involved with juvenile services, and the Sisters of Mercy and the Iredell Community Foundation grants to support our System of Care collaboration here in 2010. We have been the recipient of those grants to have, to work with child and family teams here. I provided two more pieces of paper, a couple of colored items for you, just to help you see some of the information on crisis services. The one with the pie charts is this last year snapshot of all the crisis services. You'll see the population for July 2010 in the top left-hand side of that. You'll see Iredell, again, occupies 59% of the Crossroads' total population, and you'll see the numbers there. If you look to the right, then look at the referrals to the state hospital. Notice that it's the same percentage for Iredell, 59% and 59%. So again, we're right on the money for a percentage based on the population size. Look at the referrals to mobile crisis. We had just a 4% higher in Surrey County this past year than we did in Iredell, probably because we have the crisis center based here, so it's easier for people to go there, and maybe it's also easier for people to get into hospital-level care than in the northern part of the territory. You see the referrals to the crisis and recovery center on the right-hand side. You see, again, there's another bump, Iredell County occupying 57% of the admissions there, and then a smaller number for the other two. So there's where that swap happens. Emergency department visits are on the bottom left. You'll see that Iredell occupied 51%, or 4,091 of the emergency department visits, and that's just for the first and second quarters of this past year. We don't have full-year data until about six months after the end of the quarter of the end of the fiscal year. And then referrals to psychiatric hospitals, that would be outside of the state facility, excuse me, but in local community hospitals like Charlotte, Gastonia, Winston-Salem, Hickory, and also here in Statesville, so 54% there. Also provided a comparison this past year, and then the year before last, in the bar graphs, to let you see what kind of changes that we've seen. I'm just gonna point out a couple. Number one is on the upper right, you'll see that for Iredell County, we had more people go to the state hospital this past year than we did the prior year. We don't quite know what that's about, but we know that people go there are really in serious need. So it's not a huge difference, but, you know, about, it looks like about 8% more than we had this past, than the previous year. And then, looking at the bottom right, you see referrals to psychiatric hospitals. Again, that's separate and apart from the state hospital, but you see also an increase for Iredell County there compared to the year before last. So two elevated responses. This year so far, it's very level, and so, of course, we're only after the second month of the fiscal year, so it's hard to predict what it will be like by the end of the year. But right now, Iredell's tracking very normally on its admissions, nothing unusual we have noticed on that, so. Inside of that little portfolio that's around all that packet, you'll see a 40-year history in columns, and I hope that gives you a little bit of history about Crossroads that may be of significance. You will notice, if you want to go from the fourth column from the left, you'll see 1997, 98. That's when Iredell County joined Crossroads, and some of you here tonight were with me during that time, and it has been a nice relationship, of course, ever since. And so, outside of that, you see a lot of history after that, and I won't point that out, I'll just point you to it, and it's a good little historical document to help you see what's been going on, so. Mr. Chairman, I'll take any questions y'all might have.
Questions from anyone?
Yeah, I've got a couple, and I realize I'm looking at this thing from 30,000 feet, so my question may seem, may seem like I've over-generalized the facts. You said your annual budget went from $28.7 million to $24.2 million, which is about a 15% or 16% reduction, but the number of patients that you saw due to those reductions, it was about a 38% reduction in payments, I'm sorry, in patients. I know there's a certain amount of fixed overhead costs that come into play, but, I mean, can you make me feel better about that difference?
I'll try to do that. What you're seeing, in fact, it's a very good observation, what you're seeing is, when we made the reductions, the requirements were to reduce services to, maybe I should say it a different way, to protect services for the most severely impaired, which are the higher-cost services. So what we lost is services to people that had less severe disabilities, which cost less to provide in the community. Makes some sense now?
And then, you'd made the point that you were expanding some services, but I guess it's, would it be fair to say that these expanded services really are ones that were collaborative efforts? They really didn't cost much money, so it's not like we're expanding in one area and cutting patient care in another area.
That's correct. Mostly, a whole lot of collaborations, plus the restoration of the funds that were cut last fiscal year. Those funds have been restored this year, so we're putting those back online.
Okay. And do you have any, do you have any sort of a feel, aside from what we all read in the newspaper, has the state given you any indication of what you should expect for next year?
Yes, I have. In fact, I was, there was a newspaper article that appeared in the Sunday newspaper in Mount Airy that was about an interview that I did last Friday, and it just so happened that as I was reading that, the governor got on TV Sunday night, and she gave a presentation that was very much in line with this. This information comes from the governor's budget office, and they're expecting a $3 billion shortfall now, entering the new fiscal year, starting July 1st, 2011, and she, of course, has asked all the department heads to consider what kind of contribution they can make. Two big reasons for that, the stimulus money dries up, and the taxes that will sunset at the end of this current fiscal year. So that's how they're projecting that right now. Of course, they have to go to where the larger pockets are, there's education, there's the university system, there's Health and Human Services, which is where we're at, and there's the Department of Corrections, and there's probably enough.
The question is, did they give you any indication at all about what you are likely to expect?
No, no. Nothing real specific. Just to get ready.
I've got a couple of questions, Mr. Swan. Last year, you said that you appropriated an additional $528,904 from your fund balance to meet some expectations by the state. Do you think that's gonna be a reoccurring expectation of the state, or you think we're done?
Well, it was, a good question. It was a two-year plan, and we were supposed to make another contribution this year of $500,000. When the General Assembly restored the funds that they reduced last year, they eliminated that requirement and said we didn't have to do that. However, going back to Commissioner Robertson's question, if you saw how they administered those budget reductions this year, it could very well likely be that next year, if there is a significant budget reduction, they could ask, or they could expect, programs to make some contribution out of their own fund balances. But this year, we don't have to do it.
Okay. I've been to two meetings with you, Mr. Swan. I'm beginning to get my sea legs.
You're doing well.
Well, thank you for the benefit of my fellow commissioners, though the last meeting, our fund balance was around 15.5%, and you expect that to hold up?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Okay, thanks, sir.
You're welcome.
Any additional questions, Mr. Swan?
I'd like to ask one question. On your substance and alcohol abuse programs, what percent do we cure in the first visit, our first times they're there?
Well, that's a real hard question. I'm usually prepared.
Just a ballpark, I mean, are we having much success with it, a half, or even a third?
I would say on the first attempt, this is a chronic relapsing disease we're talking about, and probably 25% of the people that enter their first treatment probably do well and remain clean for some period of time that we could call sobriety or abstinence. And then for the rest of the population, they often have to come for extra services on down the road. It's hard to get addiction treatment because it's really a lifelong process that's more like the treatment for diabetes. You have to do something every day in order to get and gain and keep recovery, and it's very hard for people to do that.
I'd like to, Mr. Swan.
You're welcome. Thank you.
We will now go into a public hearing to a rezoning request, case number 1008-1, consideration of requests from the Stateful Brick Company for a rezoning from Residential Agricultural District to Heavy Manufacturing, Conditional District, M2CD, location, Maryland Road, Stateful, North Carolina.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners. As the chairman said, this is a rezoning from RA to M2CD for Statesful Brick. It's 293 acres, which is part of an overall 321-acre tract. I'll try and explain why that is. There is an area along the lake, or along the river in this case, that has been backed out. They've agreed to go to, essentially to the railroad on the southern side, and rezone 293 of the 321 acres, so we're not looking at the entire site. This property is directly adjacent to the existing facility, and it is owned by Statesful Brick. They have been, we've been in conversation with them for quite some time now, and actually prior to the adoption of our 2030 plan, we looked pretty hard at this request and designated the area as rural industrial, to which this M2CD would comply. Instead of going through some of the smaller details, I'm gonna focus a little bit more on the actual plan for what they're going to do over time. The way that this rezoning is structured is, again, we're looking at this 293 acres, there would be three potential phases of development. There is a buffer proposed along the northern property line and along the, on the eastern side of the property as well, that varies from 100 feet to about 350 feet at its widest point. They have, it's a pretty long timeframe as to how soon the improvements are gonna be made to the site. As you can see here, this is their conceptual Phase 1, conceptual Phase 2, and conceptual Phase 3. As you remember, with a conditional district, we are tasked to tie them down, or tie the applicants down as much as possible on what they're going to do. So it's a little difficult, when you're dealing with a scale such as this, to get finite, but the folks at Statesful Brick have worked pretty hard with us to identify these areas, and what they include are several buildings and areas for materials handling, maneuvering on the site, and things of that nature. If you're familiar with the site, there is not a lot of traffic that comes in and out of here. There are obviously going to be trucks that are coming in and out of the plant, they are doing so now, and I think the representatives from Statesful Brick can talk about what the impacts would be from the proposed development, but in talking with them personally and dealing with them through the planning board meeting, I don't think this is going to be one giant expansion. It would be taking certain things offline at certain points and expanding incrementally over time. Brickyard Road is gonna be your primary access into the site. Used to be a loop here that included Maryland Drive, and I'll show you some of the pictures of these roads in just a minute, but this loop has been closed off at this point here, and there's now a cul-de-sac. So all of the traffic that comes into the site and into the larger site would be funneled down Brickyard Road and in some way through the existing facility. There's some residential located in the area, pretty few and far between. Most of the residential development is along Watts Meadow Drive. Most of the residential development is along Watts Meadow Drive. There is also some development over in this area here on larger tracks, more removed from the actual facility. However, these folks here along Watts Meadow are probably the closest, but as you can see, very far from the main facility now, and about 1,500 feet to where the proposed facility would be. This is looking down Watts Meadow Drive that I just mentioned, and the houses that I was talking about are located in this area here. And this is going down to the plant. This is the house that would probably see the most activity. It's a relatively new home. The gentleman spoke at the planning board meeting. I don't remember when it was built, but it is relatively new. This is looking back, and if I'm speaking out of turn, this is the closed portion where Maryland Drive goes down, where the cul-de-sac that I mentioned is located. This is looking down at the site. And this is looking out into the area that would be Phase One, generally speaking. We had several people come to the planning board meeting, not necessarily in opposition, basically asking questions. We might have, we've had some that are partially in disagreement, don't know if those folks came out tonight. We had a community meeting as part of this project, or as part of this process, and what that did was kind of answer a lot of the questions before we even got to the planning board meeting. I've reviewed the minutes that I've submitted to you in your packet that have been provided by Mr. Bedford Cannon, and all of the questions that were answered there, I think, are correct and accurate. I was not at that meeting, but I think they were able to offset some of the concerns at that point. At the planning board meeting, there was a unanimous recommendation in favor, and the staff has recommended in favor as well by, because it does go along with the plan and is a logical extension to the facility that's already there. And I'd be glad to answer any questions that you've got.
Any questions for Mr. Smith?
That one, Mr. Smith, you mentioned a variation in the distance in the buffers around the perimeter of the property. Is that related to topography or concerns of the neighbors? That's a fairly unusual thing.
That's an excellent question. We, it's a standard 100 feet, basically along these straight lines, but there's a waterway coming down to the river, which we use the floodplain, basically. That's where the wider areas are located.
A 300-foot buffer would probably necessitate, be necessitated by the floodplain anyway.
Yes. To some degree.
Well, you know, well, you know how Steve Johnson and buffers get along not too well. Sometimes you render a person's property useless if you go to the extreme. Okay, thank you.
You want any questions, Mr. Smith?
Thanks, Mr. Smith. Folks, this is a public hearing. You have the right to speak in favor or against this request. We'd be glad to take you at this time if you want to speak. Come on up. Just state your name.
My name's David Brady. I'm an joint landowner. I own two tracts of land on the right-hand side. If I might use this remote. But I really go back to the other one. I own this tract of land here and also this tract of land here. I'm not here really speaking in favor or opposed to the rezoning request, because I feel like the industry residential can get along together as long as everybody buys by the rules. But I am a little bit disappointed in the process of how we got where we're at now today. A year ago, myself and the other landowners were asked if we would approve Stateful Brick having a mining permit for this property. And we approved. And then a year later, we're asked to approve three brick plants. And in our initial meeting with Stateful Brick, I asked a question. If the property bought from Crescent had restrictions on the deed, I was told it did In truth, there were eight pages of restrictions on the 11-page deed. And I brought up these deed restrictions at the planning board meeting. I was told by Mr. Fields that they were only going to vote on what was presented to them and was not concerned with the deed. And I'm concerned that the Department of Planning made recommendations to the planning board concerning setbacks that were different than the deed restrictions. I asked a question. If the 100-year floodplain, which is shown along Buffalo Creek, was also the 770-foot high watermark that was outlined in the deed, which is described as the contour line? And they did not know. I asked why there's no buffer zone shown along Buffalo Creek above the 770-high watermark, and I did not get an answer. Even though the published guidelines from the planning board states that a screening device must be placed at full length of any common property line and must be at least 90% opaque in all seasons. And the deed restrictions, it states that the property, if the property is used for industrial purposes, that no industrial uses are permitted within 200 feet measured horizontally, regardless of the topography of the 770-foot contour line. I also asked if there's any restrictions concerning stack heights on the property, and I was told there are no restrictions. The deed does not allow for even a communication tower above 50 feet. Now, it may appear that I'm against this rezoning request, and I'm not. But I want to be assured by Stateful Brick and now the county commissioners that this rezoning will be at least inside the deed restrictions on this property, particularly in regards to buffer zones between Stateful Brick and the joint landowners. Because, you see, I've got 7,000 feet of common property lines. And I would like to build houses sometime in the future, just like Stateful Brick wants to build a brick plant sometime in the future, on that property across Buffalo Creek from this Phase Two. And I just want to make sure that during the winter months, if we build houses over there, that we're not looking at a brick plant. Stateful Brick has been good neighbors. But during our conversations, you know, when we're looking at 10 to 15 years out, and I'm looking at this as a businessman, to be rezoned from residential agricultural to heavy industrial with a 15-year timeframe on just Phase One, I question sometimes why you'd want to spend that much extra tax money. I asked a question. Is Stateful Brick up to be sold? I was told it was not. And I understand that the Sonny, that these, I mean, these guys have always been honest and above-board with all of us surrounding neighborhood there. But what goes down here tonight is going to affect all of us surrounding this property. And I just want to ask that we get assurances. I know Steve made a comment about the 350-foot. But if you look at a 770-foot floodplain, or flood zone from Lake Norman, and you go 250-foot back from that, it's probably going to be where Phase Two is shown on this plant. I appreciate y'all letting me speak, and I will agree with whatever decision y'all make. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Smith, would you like to respond to that, sir?
On the first issue of the screening, this gentleman is entirely correct. There is a screening requirement of, basically, it's a 10-foot-high screen of vegetation or something similar. We're looking at areas that are covered with trees now that would suit that much better than any fence, wall, or, you know, planted vegetation would do. So I think that the screening portion of this is, should be covered. We would require that they maintain those areas. The second issue of the deed restrictions, we generally just do not try to deal with the individual deed restrictions of any property that we have for a rezoning, generally permits and things of that nature. Unless it's something that's obvious, you know, that's on a plat that we have recorded, we may get into something to do with that. But it's almost impossible for us to research every deed that comes through our office. You know, and generally speaking, we're not qualified to do so. And finally, the 770 line, there was a little bit of confusion, yes, at the planning board meeting. However, this blue line, in this case, does indicate the 770 line, the 770 contour, which is basically the project boundary of the lake and the river in this case. But the map, the site plan that has been submitted by the brick company shows going beyond that into the floodplain, as they've described as a 100-year floodplain. So I think that that area is going to be very well protected. I have not looked from this person's property over to Stateful Brick, so I can't speak to the view and what could be seen and what could not be seen. I think there are others in the room that probably could answer that better than me. If I missed anything, I'd be glad to answer.
Questions for you, Mr. Smith?
I think I understood Mr. Brady to say that he would not like to look through there in the wintertime. Is that 100-foot buffer of the trees that are there currently, is that enough to shield, or should we maybe require some evergreen, Leyland cypress, or what would be the best?
Good question. We would require that the buffer, whether it be something they provide or something nature provides, be 90% opaque, meaning that just about every situation throughout the year, you could not see through.
At what height?
You know, generally speaking, I use 10 feet. But in this case, it's going to be, you know, the natural vegetation will be much higher. You know, if you felt that adding Leylands would be necessary, this is a conditional zoning, and you could add that as a condition, as long as you...
But is that a, you know, you have to look at the topography, because if, you know, if the land slopes down 60 feet, and you've got trees growing along the creek, I mean, the tree's got to be pretty tall to block it. I'm just questioning how realistic it is to, you know, to guarantee a view. I mean, none of this, you know, no disrespect for the folks at Stateful Brick, but if it was Stateful Shoe Company, you know, I mean, nobody wants to live next to heavy industry. We understand that, but we also like to have jobs, too. So I'm not, my point being frank is that depending upon what the topography is, I'm not so sure that we can guarantee, you know, views from adjacent properties that they'll never change.
Nine times out of 10, the natural vegetation is going to do a much, much better job and be much more suitable than anything that can be put in place. You know, it grows slowly a lot of times. What's put in place a lot of times grows slowly, a lot of times is not maintained, so keeping the existing vegetation would probably do the best job.
It is conditional use. Does that mean that if they were to sell the site and decide that they were going to put in their plants, then add Stateful Shoe, let's just say, or Stateful Widget, would they be allowed to do that?
They would not. They, any change to the conditions stated on the application would have to come through the same process.
Okay. And finally, my last question is, if there are restrictions in the deed that are more restrictive than the restrictions in this conditional use, maybe this is Mr. Pope's question. Which one rules the day?
The more restrictive.
Okay. Thank you. That's all the questions I have.
I have one here.
Okay.
Well, while we've got a drawing of the site plan, what we don't have is a topo map that shows the elevations. So I assume when you say the 770-foot line, that's an elevation?
Yes.
Okay. If you look at this blue line you had up here, which is, you say is 770 feet approximately?
In this area, I would say that it is.
All right. The interior of that property, does it fall toward that line? Does it fall away from it?
My guess, and I think the reps from Stateful Brick might better answer this one, but I'm going to say that everything is going to start falling back to this point, because it is draining into the creek and into the lake.
Okay.
And the same would apply, I'm assuming, from the other side.
So I'm saying 300-foot off that line is going to be a higher elevation than the blue line?
I would say it would be.
Well, I mean, Mr. Brady brings up some good points, you know, that in all these matters, you need the wisdom of Solomon, because there's a ditch on both sides of the road. You know, you talk about a 77,000-foot line, well, if you go out 250, 300 feet, you've consumed 30, I mean, 50 acres of some of this property.
I will point out, and I'm sorry, I will point out that in this case, the building, building here is about, this is going to be about 500 feet. Now, as I mentioned earlier, this is a conceptual plan. There could be some change. Any significant change would have to come back through here, but by providing, you know, an additional 500-foot separation, that is even more when it comes to noise and dust and things of that nature. So the building itself would be moved even more than that 350 feet.
Okay. That condition is part of the ordinance, though, that you would enforce. It's not a condition of the rezoning. Is that right?
That would be, the location of the building?
Yes, sir.
That would be part of the rezoning.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask Mr. Pope for a clarification, because in response to a question, you said that deed restrictions, you would go with the most restrictive, but the county doesn't enforce deed restrictions, so...
No, they're private agreement. That would be up to somebody else to enforce.
Okay. Assuming they're valid restrictions. I just wanted to make sure that was clear, though, that just because there's a deed restriction there, if it's not included in the conditional use, it's not up to the county zoning to enforce that?
That's right.
Okay.
So, all due respect, Mr. Pope, was that lawyer talk that if there's a point of contention here, it's going to be settled in a court somewhere?
Well, let me see if I can figure out how to say this. The deed restrictions are a, what I would refer to as a private form of government. It's an agreement between two individuals that the county's not a party to and doesn't have any interest in. If the deed restrictions require a setback of 500 feet, and the county's zoning ordinance requires a setback of 300 feet, county's only interest is enforcing the 300 feet. The 500 feet, though, assuming they're valid restrictions, and I wouldn't have any reason to think they're not, could be enforced by someone else. It's just the county, it's not the county's job to get involved in private contract matters and seek to enforce for one side or the other.
Okay.
More questions for Mr. Smith? Thanks, sir. I appreciate you. Is anyone else in order wishing to speak again in favor or against this request?
Mr. Chairman, Board members, my name is Bedford Cannon, and I represent Statesville Brick Company. The first thing I'd like to say, that I think it's a very nice touch that you have the clock over here so that long-winded lawyers can see that they've said too much, and they could sit down when appropriate. That's good. And I won't be very long. I'd just like to say a few things that I think maybe cut to the heart of this thing. Number one, Statesville Brick is here for the long run. They've been here, and their predecessors have been here for almost 100 years, and this company's not for sale. This company is to be run by the families that own it. So if anybody has any lingering doubts about that, you can put those to rest. Secondly, almost all of the commercial traffic will come through the present Brickyard, and at such time as Phase One is implemented, the traffic will go through there. Statesville Brick Company had some problems in years past with vandalism and theft because they had a, basically, a road that ran around through and back out towards Highway 70, and they purposely abandoned a part of that road so that Maryland Drive and Statesville, and I'm sorry, Brickyard Road are no longer a part of the same loop. So there's a, I think the folks that live basically to the north and to the, well, that live to the north that have had concerns before will not have those concerns. I cannot tell you, and nobody at Statesville Brick Company can tell you, at what time Phase One will be implemented. We all know that we're in the toughest economic times that we've been in for the last 70 years, but be that as it may, Statesville Brick Company wants to be prepared to move at such time as economic conditions get better in the building trades, the housing industry, and they will ultimately, and we have faith that they will. So I'm just talking about the, right now, their theory about why do this now. They want to be ready when the time comes and go ahead, and we realize there will be more monies involved and higher tax valuations and so forth. We still want to be ready to go when the time comes. The time for Phase One may not be for another five years. It may not be for seven or eight years. And certainly, the time for Phases Two and Three would be probably double that timeout. But we want to go ahead, and I would say this, and this is a very important thing, is that what you'll get in the way of manufacturing there will be the exact types of manufacturing of clay products and possibly tile in the future, but not now, that is presently being conducted at the Statesville Brick Company site. That's a condition that we knew from the very outset, so there will be no Statesville Shoe Company or anything to that effect. The person that owns that property, and it's going to be us, is going to manufacture tile, pavers, clay products, and brick of different types. So I would hope and think that small businesses like Statesville Brick Company are going to be the vehicle that brings us out of the poor economic conditions that we are currently experiencing. I think it's going to be the private sector, it's going to be private ownership that'll bring us back from the situation that we've got right now, and so we hope to be a part of it. And that's our philosophy. I'm not going to go over everything that Mr. Smith said because he did a very good job of the technical aspects of this thing, but that is the philosophy. We're here for the duration, and I think 100 years proves it. And one last thing I would like to say is that Statesville Brick Company has spent probably $10 million with regards to expansions to their facilities. They are currently burning wood, which is not generally used in this industry for their kills in their newer plant, and we warned them, the language in there about new technology because we hope there will be new technology in the pipeline that will allow for cleaner combustion in the process of making brick and tile products. So that's our philosophy, and although Mr. Smith did a great job, if I or anybody that's here from Statesville Brick can answer a question, we'll obviously be here. We're here to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cannon. Is there anyone else? If not, I'll close the public hearing at this time. Do you entertain a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the zoning map amendment, make a finding that the approval is consistent with the adopted 2030 Horizon Plan, and its set approval is reasonable and in the public interest due to its consistency with the 2030 Horizon Plan. As a result, set approval furthers the goals and objectives of the 2030 Horizon Plan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Any questions regarding the motion? If not all in favor of motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed. I'll have it. Mr. Smith, if you'd like to come in.
Second request that I have for you tonight is to rezone 6.7 acres from NB and RA to straight general business. The owner slash applicant on this is LaLok Lane Properties, who's represented by Andrew Sherrill. His property is located at 5063 Taylorsville Highway, which is Highway 90. Although this is a straight request, and you have to consider everything in the general business designation, what Mr. Sherrill is looking at doing is a contractor's yard and basing his business out of this property. There's currently a building already there that he plans to take down. You can see it up here. Currently, this area is zoned NB. It's been this way since 1990, and as you can see, it's just basically the frontage along Highway 90. There's GB, M2 CUD, and more general business across Highway 90. Through the 2030 Plan, we designated generally this entire area for future commercial development because you just, you have a good bit of it out there already. Based on that, we have gone along with the straight GB designation, has become our habit, so to speak, is we try and get conditions where we can. However, in this case, we were pretty comfortable with what Mr. Sherrill was proposing. This is an aerial of the property. This is the building that will be torn down, and there's a gully I'll show you in just a minute, which is located in this area that he's been filling in, may actually have already been completed, I'm not quite sure. As I mentioned, this does go along with the 2030 Plan. We envisioned this entire area being more of a rural, commercial type of area, and based on that, we recommend in favor of it from a staff perspective. The planning board recommended in favor of it unanimously as well. And just to give you an idea of what we're talking about physically, this is looking from the property across the street, and the railroad is basically right behind these trees. This is looking back towards Statesville from the property. This is looking out towards the lumber company, going towards Taylorsville. This is that low-lying area I was talking about, back of the property, and this is the building that is currently there. I think it's being used as a bar right now, and I think this would be totally demolished and replaced. I'd be glad to answer any questions. I do know Mr. Sherrill's here, if you have any questions of him.
Any questions for Mr. Smith? Thank you, Mr. Smith. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor or against this request, may do so now. Just state your name when you come up.
Mr. Chairman, fellow commissioners, my name's Andrew Sherrill. I am the property owner and represent LaLok Lane Properties in this situation. And my intent here with your approval would be to place a contractor's office in the place of the existing beer joint here in Stony Point, and on the back of the property, in the future, erect a steel building to securely store copper materials, piping. I'm a general contractor. Grading, water, and sewer work is what I concentrate on. So this property was actually a foreclosure that I purchased with the intentions of being able to put a respectful contractor's office in the place, in the exact place of it, and be glad to answer any questions you guys may have.
Thank you, Mr. Sherrill. Any questions for Mr. Sherrill?
I thought he was going to say he's going to put a lawyer's office.
I was going to ask if beer will be served at the contractor's office, but I guess that's probably out of line.
Thank you, Mr. Sherrill.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? If not, I'll close this public hearing and entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we grant this request for rezoning from neighborhood business and residential agriculture to general business.
Any questions regarding the motion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed. I'll have it. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Miller, you're next.
I've got a whole notebook of stuff here. Chairman Norman, members of the board, county manager Nashburn, I really appreciate you getting us on the agenda tonight. I know it was short notice. We received word August 25th that there would be some additional funding, 0% financing through the school construction bonds. We got word the 30th of actually the guidelines associated with that. What typically happens in these situations is if all the money is not asked for, then the money is placed back in the pool, and typically, there's a second offering. This actually is a third offering. We were not included in the second offering because Irondale County is considered one of the high-wealth counties. So to give you a little bit of background, I've come before the Board of Commissioners on several occasions to ask for the authority to apply for these general bonds for construction. The bonds are to be used, if you choose to use those, toward the Cool Springs Project, which is in our Phase Three Facilities Task Force Plan. That particular project is the last remaining piece in our Facilities Task Force Phase Three. We understand the economic conditions. We understand that the question is not the bonds, the question is paying back the bonds, and we understand that that discussion will have to take place. However, if we do not ask for the bonds, we do not have that decision to make. So we are asking that we be allowed to apply for 3.4 million in additional bonding authority. This will give us enough bond authority to actually do the Cool Springs Project through this funding mechanism, should the board choose to do so. Our board would like to discuss with this board how that debt service could be paid and how we could help, if there are ways that we could help with that debt service. If it does not work, and it's something that we cannot do, we at least have that opportunity before us. Then we will look to the future, and this board's decision, we will move forward, and in our Phase Four, Cool Springs will be number one on the list. So this is an opportunity to save money. It's not a totally 0% bond. As most of you know, there are closing costs, there are other things associated with these kinds of bonds that might create a small amount of additional charge. It could be a 1% or 2%, still very, very low. The bid climate right now is the best it's been in probably 25 years. We have a lot of our construction companies in the area that could use an infusion of this type of a project. We're trying to use as much as possible local contractors and local businesses. So we think it's a good opportunity, but we do understand the economic conditions under which we presently are. I'll be glad to answer questions.
Dr. Miller, let me understand, this is 3.4 million in bond authority?
That's correct.
How long is that window open for that bond?
The federal government has set, and the state has set, December 31st as the deadline for using these bonds. If they're not used, they would revert back into the pool of bonds.
This year?
This year, 2010. Now, they did carry over the 2009 bonding authority to 2010. There's a possibility they could do that again, they could carry it over another year. We don't know that. I did talk to Mary Spalding in Raleigh, who is in Dr. Ben Matthews' office. She said that's a question that would have to be asked of Dr. Matthews, who is over this particular fund, and that there is a possibility, it'd just be something you'd have to ask. But December 31st, 2010, is the deadline.
So we're hoping, basically, a four-month window. When do we have to make the decision to open the window?
We have to make the decision to open the window before December 31st. Now, after, if we choose to sell those bonds...
Yeah.
I'm not sure of the timeline. Susan probably could help us with that.
I've confused myself, so I'm, in other words, we have to commit to the bonds by when?
Susan, you want to help us with this?
The bonds have to be issued by December 31st.
So a decision...
We're not getting out of it.
You're basically saying, we're going to use these bonds, we're going to issue these bonds, and they have to be issued, and when they're issued, you have to have a source of funding identified.
So, but I just mean, that's the done-deal date?
Yes.
December 31st?
Yes.
When, in between now and then, is there a deadline to get the ball rolling, I guess?
Susan, I'm going to defer to you because Susan knows the timelines for these kinds of things.
I believe you said that the application you're asking him to approve is what date?
Tomorrow.
He has to submit that application by tomorrow.
You need action tonight to make that deadline tomorrow, is that, that's correct? And then that opens a, basically, a four-month window where...
That's correct. I misunderstood your question. That's correct.
Well, that's not short notice, that's real short notice.
Well, the window was September 1st through September 8th. That's the window from the state that was given to us. So we're pretty tight.
But, Mr. Miller, this money's been available, and they've established deadlines, and then we blow through a deadline, they come back and they say, well, we still got some more money. So evidently, everybody in the state's not requesting all of the available money, and they keep rotating the money back. Is that right?
That's correct. The original, the... The original, the first offered in 2009 was approximately 280 million. That all was given out in two offerings. They gave the first offering, they had money left, then they gave the second. That was the first two we did. Then in 2010, we had another 270, 80 million that was available. That was offered, first round. We obtained 4 million and some odd dollars. Second round, we were not included because we're a high wealth county. They have 50 million left that has not been allocated. They gave us an opportunity then to ask for authority from that 50 million. My latest information from Raleigh is that all of the 50 million has been requested, not officially, but unofficially, in excess of the 50 million. We did, I sent an email to Raleigh just saying, "We're interested." So, they have included us in that list. Now, if we choose not to, then that would just revert back to one of those other systems that maybe is not included.
Well, my concern, and we've talked about it beforehand, and you're very understanding, and certainly our board appreciates that. And you're right, these aren't 100% zero-interest bonds, there are costs associated with them. However, they are, can't beat the interest anywhere. And it's a given that construction costs are down appreciably. It's also possible the money could remain available in the future. And this is, the dilemma we face here in my mind is indicative of what's going on everywhere. You know, when this banking crisis started, the Federal Reserve injected about $2.25 trillion into the banks. They just created money out of thin air and told the banks, "You've got it if you wanna loan it." Well, they're not loaning any money, and nobody's borrowing any money. The reason nobody's borrowing any money is, the interest is cheap, but they're afraid they can't pay it back. And that's the concern we have. We've got the same concern everybody has, you can't beat the interest, can't beat the construction cost, but we're afraid we can't pay it back with existing revenue sources. And, well, that on top of the fact, the banks can borrow it from the Federal Reserve...
For zero.
For zero, and loan it to the Treasury for 3% and take no risk. Which, I'll say this again, it creates a pretty good environment for some difficult inflationary times ahead, but that's just my opinion. But that's the dilemma that we face here. What I would like to see us do, Mr. Chairman, if... I'd like to respond in kind to Mr. Miller. He's been very sympathetic to the dilemma we face, and, you know, unlike some folks, he hasn't come up here and been confrontational at all. Because I would like to see us defer to this decision to a later date, that we sit down and talk to him about actually the revenue stream, and we're gonna talk about our schedule and standards for the evaluation, and that's gonna impact the revenue in the future. We don't have any hard numbers, we've only got estimates as to what property valuation's gonna be. Although it's tempting, I think the prudent thing to do is just hold off and sit down and talk to these folks, and just run the risk that this money will be available in the future, and we'll see if it matches up to available revenue stream.
Is that in the form of a motion, Mr. Sherrill?
Yeah, and I would, I've sat on many of these school funding committees, and I would volunteer to be one of the commissioners, if another would like to sit and sit down and talk to these folks.
May I...
Pardon?
Just clarifying my mind, are you saying, "Do not apply," or discuss the funding of the bonds?
Well, explain to me all the implications of applying. I mean, is...
The application would be...
Am I slipping our neck in the noose if we apply?
No, you're not obligated in any way. What you're doing is you're saying, "We would like to have the option to do these bonds." If you choose not to do the bonds, and I asked that specific question, by December 31st or before that, they will revert back to the federal fund or pool. So, if we do not apply for the bonds, or if we do apply for the bonds, you're not obligated.
Okay, and who'll do the application? Will that be your task?
It's already done. It just hadn't been approved.
You came ready, didn't you?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Well, good work.
And it's already been approved by our board.
Okay, I would include in my motion to give Mr. or Dr. Miller the option to go ahead and apply, with the understanding that this board's not committing to anything until we can look at available revenue streams.
But, I mean, we don't have any available revenue stream for this. So, why should we mislead the school system or the state into believing that we may actually borrow this money when there's not three votes on this board to raise the taxes, to come up with the $1,094,000 that we'll need in budget year 12, 13? Right now, with all of our projections, the best that we have at the moment says we're gonna be a million, if they borrow this money at this interest rate and these low construction costs, we're still gonna be a million in the hole, and this board will have to raise taxes by a million to do it. And we know you're not gonna vote for it, okay? You know, and I don't see two other people on this board that'll vote for it. And then if nobody's gonna vote for it, then I don't think that we should pretend that we might.
Well, I'm gonna be clear here. I'm not trying to kick this can down the road. I don't think that anybody in here has it in their mind, given the economic conditions and some of the misery that's been visited upon the folks in this county, have any inclination to raise taxes right now. I think in a down economy like this, that's just pouring salt in the wound. But I'm of the mind that even if we don't exercise our option on these bonds by December 31st, that option that some, I don't think is gonna magically disappear and go away. And I think if, on the front end, if we express interest in these bonds, and the money lies, and the state can continue to draw interest, somebody's drawing interest on this money being parked somewhere. Federal taxpayers are paying for it, but somebody's gathering interest on it, that's probably the state of North Carolina. Where is the money now? Pardon? Where is the money now? Is it in the state's hands currently?
Yes.
Man alive, this is risky. Do you know where it's going? It's going down east of 95.
It's not actually, it's federal government money that's guaranteed to the state. So, I don't know, it's probably not in a fund, is it?
It's not real money. It is an allocation that offers the banks or private investors some type of a incentive. When they were first rolled out, banks or private investors would be given a tax credit for holding this debt when the county issued it. Now, it's such that we borrow the money from the bank, from Sennata RFP, borrow the money. We borrow at a taxable rate. The U.S. Treasury each day is setting a new rebate rate. So, on the day we close, we have a taxable rate we pay to the bank, and then each time we make a debt payment, we are reimbursed or rebated the interest. And that's where you can get a little difference, because the bank's gonna set the rate, the date that they make the proposal to us. And let's say that that taxable rate's 5.25. And the day we close, the rebate rate is, say, 4.90, then we're gonna have an effect of 0.35% interest rate on that deal. The local government commission told me they have not seen any spread greater than 75 basis points. So, that's the number I use in my calculation. But it's not really a pot of money that's sitting out there, it's making it available to us to borrow at lesser interest rates.
So, basically, the federal government is subsidizing the loaner of this money?
Correct.
They're paying our interest, is that...
Yeah, correct.
No, they're pressing.
There's some point that we...
And I will say, worst-case scenario, we apply, we have the funding, we don't have the funding stream to retire the debt, December 31st comes around, the money reverts back into the pool. We lose it. Best-case scenario, December 31st rolls around, they decide, "We got a lot of money out here and a lot of projects we wanna carry forward, let's roll it another year." So, that's sort of the options that I see as being the possibilities.
Well, that's where I was headed a minute ago. If we get to December 31st, and across the state, not a whole lot of people are pulling the trigger on this option, the money sits there. If the federal government begins to pull that money back, there's gonna be a whole lot of screaming and yelling going on. And I'm saying, if we go ahead and we say, "Yeah, we're interested," and we allocate this money, and we don't exercise the option, there's a pretty good likelihood that a year from now, we're gonna be sitting there, or somebody's gonna be sitting here and saying, "Well, they rolled that money over again." Because you've got a lot of counties that are in a lot worse financial shape than we are, with no prospect at all of paying back any portion of a debt that they may assume.
Yeah, but we don't have to say yes, we don't have to approve it tonight to be able to apply for that money a year from now.
Is that correct, Dr. Miller?
I would not know, because I would not know what would be available. I mean, if they offer another offering, that's correct, I mean, we would be able to apply.
If we don't have another offering, it expires in December anyway, so voting yes tonight
doesn't guarantee us access to that money a year from now, and we know we're not gonna approve the money between now and tomorrow.
Mr. Chairman, business is business, and I've personally let options expire, and as long as I had a thought that I might want to exercise that option, I didn't feel bad about letting it expire. But to take an option away from another county, or to send a murky, optimistic signal to our own school board, that's just not true, I think is bad business, and I don't think we should do that.
Okay.
Can I enter the conversation?
Well, I think I've got a mic.
Please. The reason that we're looking at this particular option is because our board has some resources they're willing to put into the mix, which could bridge that gap we're talking about, which is that year or two-year gap of funding. Now, those resources we have are in several, and our board would have to approve it, but if we don't apply, then we're taking that option off the table, because we won't have 3.4 million to put with the 9.2 that we have, or 9.3, to make the Cool Springs project happen. Because all resources we would have, we could pay that debt service for a year or maybe two years. That's a possibility. Now, our board would have to discuss that with your board.
Last budget session, y'all were saying y'all were broke as church mice.
Well...
And now you're telling me you're gonna come up with...
No.
...a million bucks? I mean, Jerry Maguire, show me the money.
Okay.
And tomorrow's your drop-dead date?
Let me explain some funding issues. Lottery funds, which are dispersed to the county for school construction, are dispersed on quarterly basis. We basically get a planning number from the state. The planning number this year was 1,400 and some odd thousand. That money has to be used for capital investment in schools. We've been using it for our Career Academy Pay As You Go Plan. When the fourth quarter money came out, they had excess funds because they took in more than they anticipated in the planning budget. So, what happened was, we had a net, not windfall, because we've got plenty of projects to do, we had a net increase in the amount of money available of $900,000, which we can apply to projects, we've got plenty of projects to apply it to. We can hold that money in abeyance, we can use that money toward projects, which we've got plenty to do, or we can project that money forward to a debt service. Now, our board would have to make that decision, I'm just giving you information. That is what I'm talking about, is the potential for some funding that could be from other sources. Now, I would not want to use lottery money for debt service for long-term. That would not be a prudent thing to do. However, if we have funds in place that we can set aside for that purpose, and we know that's what it's going for, that's another issue for short-term, for a year. So, that's what I'm referring to. That is a stopgap. At some point, this commission would have to decide, are we gonna fund it further? Where are we gonna fund it? How are we gonna fund it? And you really have to come up with that decision prior to issuing the bonds. So, just throwing that out for discussion. But if we do not apply for this money, it's a moot point.
It's a key, go ahead. Question, Dr. Miller, are you saying that this could be entirely done without additional funding from this board?
Yes, we can do this project, well, we could do this project with the 12.7 million in bonding authority, should this board choose to go that route. The debt service of that money, that's the big question.
Well, that's my question to you.
That's the big question. We could do a year, possibly a year, as a stopgap because of revenue and, you know, those kind of things. But we couldn't fund it totally without using all of our recurring capital, which we typically need in the summertime anyway to do basic projects at schools. I don't think you'd want to use lottery money for long-term debt service, you could do it for, you could use lottery money, it's well within the guidelines to use lottery money for debt service. I mean, it could be set aside for that. But as most of you know, you never know when the state's gonna decide, "Well, you know, we're gonna redirect that lottery money," or "We're gonna change that lottery proceeds." So, I'm not sure that's a good source of long-term debt. Short-term debt, you probably could do it for a year or two, but long-term, I wouldn't want to do it. But I just wanted to get that into discussion.
And I've got some concerns that every dime in your revenue stream that you've got, you're gonna have dedicated to planned capital projects, when we know there are unplanned capital projects that come down the path, and we don't have cash, we don't have capital reserve funds anymore to help anybody out. I just think we're flying way too low to the ground on this one. I'm not gonna support going forward, because I don't think this board's gonna raise the taxes to do it, and there's, and I just think we're... We know we're not gonna, we know we're not gonna raise the taxes to do this, or if they spend all of their money, and then they don't have anything in reserve, then even if we didn't raise taxes then, then we're gonna be back in a situation where we're gonna have to pay for stuff that nobody in this room can even identify what that project is in the next few years. So, if you've got a motion, I'm ready to vote, but unfortunately, Kenny, you know...
I understand.
I believe next, I believe that our next budget cycle, we're gonna be arguing about whether or not the county's gonna help you with your expense budget to put teachers in these buildings after the state gets finished with that round of cuts, so...
Totally understand.
So, I'm not gonna be able to support...
We understand that, but I feel like we need to get that discussion out there.
And you probably would be, you did the right thing to come and at least lay it before us.
And, Mr. Chairman, I'd just add to that, that, you know, in spite of Dr. Miller's comments, I stand by what Mr. Robertson has said, and even if there's some miracle at the school board, they figured out a way to fund this all on their own, we still were given some oversight of that, and we may need to save them from themselves. I mean, we just got some kind of award for being sensible and frugal, and maybe we ought to live up to the award one more day.
Okay.
And I do have a request, Dr. Miller. Next time you come, don't come and say, "Well, our board could vote on this." our board could vote on this to spend this money if you do this." It needs to be that your board voted to do that, and your finance director saying, "We got the money and we're ready to go." Because otherwise, you know, we vote for this, and they gotta cash a check that you just wrote.
Right. Well, and understand the reason that I'm not saying that is because that discussion has been made, but it has not been voted on. And since it's not been voted on, I'm not...
Right to that.
I'm not gonna...
I understand where you are, okay?
Okay.
Wait, is there, did you have a motion?
Yeah, but I can't remember what it was.
Yours was to go ahead and vote?
Motion for Dr. Miller to apply with the understanding the board is not committing anything until we look at the revenues.
My concern is, if we don't apply at all, does that money just, is it thrown back into the pot, and we gotta go through all of this all over again?
My understanding from Mary Spaulding is that the inquiry from the school systems and the state for this 50 million exceeds the 50 million. So, if we don't apply, I'm sure somebody else will use it as...
I just wonder how many boards of commissioners are sitting around in the state of North Carolina saying, "Well, let's go ahead and apply for it, and maybe the stimulus will actually start working, and we'll be awash in money in 60 days."
I'm a little concerned that...
It heals three times there, Dorothy.
I'm a little concerned that if we do not go ahead with our request, then some miraculous way, the current, the present administration, like they did this past weekend, may come up with another offer, with some more money floating around. And I know what's gonna happen, Steve, it's gonna go down eastern North Carolina, and I would hate for our people here not to have a crack at it. So, if I'm understanding it right, we've got from now till December that we don't actually commit anything.
We don't borrow any money till we vote to borrow money.
That's correct.
Is that your understanding? Mr. Blumstein, is that your understanding?
That is, but I will need authorization by October 1st to move ahead with finding, with accepting proposals and public hearings, and working with bond counsel to put the deal together, because to close by December 31st, it will have to be approved by the local government commissioner their first Tuesday in December. So, I can't wait till the end of November to start the process, we would never get it closed. I would really need that by October 1st.
And, Mr. Chairman, again, I'd hate to keep, but everybody's keeping going on with this debate, and...
We're gonna have, we're gonna motion here in just a minute.
Well, I'm just saying...
Yes, sir.
A lot of people are gonna put wheels in motion, get up out of bed, and do a whole lot of things, and it's gonna be for naught.
Well, I don't, I'm like Mr. Mitchell spoke about a minute ago, if the opportunity persists, I don't think we would be doing the folks in Iredale County a disservice to, on the front end, exclude them from the opportunity. But I want to make sure I understand, folks understand, I don't want to create any false expectations. I'm looking at this spreadsheet, and if we, the revenue projections, the model we have before includes the proposed QSCB for Cool Springs. And we're looking in 2013, we're looking at a red number down at the bottom that says 1,94,000. Okay, the following year, that number drops to 111,082, and in 2015, we're breaking even, is that right?
Yes, sir, that's correct. Let me say, though, in 1213, that 1,94,000, that's in the red prior to funding any annual capital. That's the negative after the debt service, and then the next year, 111, and then in FY15, we would pick up some...
We've got a leaking roof, we can't fix it.
Right.
That's right. And I promise you, we will be given the opportunity to contribute when that happens.
As I said before, if the board chooses, and we do not go this route, then in Facilities Task Force Four, which will be coming up, Cool Springs is gonna be number one. That'll be the first need. But we feel like, our board feels like, and I feel like, we owe it to the folks in Cool Springs to honor the commitment we made to them in Phase Three, and this is an opportunity which I feel obligated that we bring it to you guys.
Okay, have we entertained a motion?
There's a motion on the floor.
How about repeat the motion?
It was to approve...
Motion for Dr. Miller to apply with the understanding that the board, meaning the county commissioners, are not committing anything until we look at the revenues.
Okay. You heard a motion, any questions, go ahead and motion?
Yeah, I'm reconsidering my motion, Mr. Chairman, you afforded me the luxury of doing that.
Sure.
While you're thinking, Steve, you did give them permission to go ahead and apply, is that way I understood it?
That was the intent of my motion.
That's the only request we have, is permission to apply.
Come on, I seen pushy fellow.
I understand, but ours is getting late. I'm gonna, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna stand by my original motion, and I'm gonna do it for this reason. And I want to be perfectly honest with everyone. I'm afraid if we don't, we're gonna lose our place in line. And we may have to start the process over. And I got a suspicion that not everybody in the state, or very few of the people, are gonna exercise this option. And the ones who don't are gonna lose their place in line, and we can always fall back, and if the economy improves and this money remains available, we can go back in two to three years, if the opportunity still exists, and borrow the money according to these standards. I'm not saying that's gonna happen, but that's a possibility that could be open to us. Now, having said that, I want to be honest to this point, that you have an unfunded debt service, given the revenue projections that Ms. Blumstein is prepared for us, you have a deficit of 1,94,607 dollars in 2013, and in 2013, 14, you have a deficit of 111,082 dollars, but those numbers are further subsidized by the fact that we're not doing any maintenance to the buildings. Now, that, unless the economy dramatically improves, and unless the school system, after we sat down to talk to them, they can come up with really a million, roughly a million two, to get us back to the break-even point, and on top of that, come up with some money to contribute toward annual capital improvements, to fix HVAC, and roofs and so forth. I think to proceed without some guarantee on their behalf would be irresponsible. But I will, I think I'm gonna get beat, but I'm gonna stick by my original motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion? Any questions, go ahead and motion? All in favor of motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
No.
Okay, 3-2. Okay, moving right along, Mr. Mashin, you're next.
Mr. Chairman, the first two items are gonna be presented by Brad Brawley, who is with
Iredale County Emergency Management Coordinator David Martin appeared before you earlier to seek approval for emergency management exercise funds for a full-scale exercise at the Statesville Airport. I'm here tonight to request that you allocate funding in the amount of $10,500 to conduct this exercise with total reimbursement from the North Carolina Emergency Management Office upon completion of the exercise.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Motion to approve, any questions, go ahead and motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed?
Okay, the Iredale County Emergency Communications requests the board's approval of backup public safety answering point agreements between Iredale County Emergency Communications Operations and Management Department and the Statesville and Mooresville Police Departments. These official agreements are necessary for the continued funding of the telephone equipment for the secondary public safety answering points at those departments.
Can I ask you to move the microphone a little bit closer to your mouth, you better speak up a little bit?
These official agreements are necessary for the continued funding of the telephone equipment at the secondary public safety answering points by the North Carolina 911 Board, and this will allow us to continue to fund those backup public safety points for us.
What?
This will allow us to continue to fund, through the 911 Board, money, the public safety answering points, the secondary ones at Statesville and Mooresville Police.
So, this continues what we've been doing in the past, we just, or the channel to which this money's funded?
There's been a big debate on whether or not we can use these funds for both of these backup sites, and I think that question is now being resolved, but we do have to have agreements with them in order to be able to do that, and that's what the request is here.
Okay, I have a motion.
Motion for approval, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry.
Any questions, go ahead and motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Next item is memo number six, and this is a request from the Sheriff's Department for approval of a budget amendment to accept a $25,917 Department of Justice Assistance Grant. You have already approved the Sheriff's Department applying for these funds, the county did receive acknowledgement that the funds have been granted. Now, in order for them to expend these funds, a budget amendment is needed, and that's what the request is here for you to approve the budget amendment. That'd be budget amendment number nine. Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to approve, any questions, go ahead and motion? In that office, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed?
Mr. Wyatt Dean Law will present item D, which is memo number seven.
Good evening, gentlemen. In April 2010, this commission did approve budget amendment number 64, which appropriated $215,000 to convert 50 of the sheriff's office Crown Victorias to combination fuel, gas, natural gas, and regular gas. In addition, the board did approve the, that the sheriff's office could apply for a grant, a clean-fueled advanced technology grant in the amount of $39,826 was awarded to the sheriff's office for that project. Sheriff's Office is ready to go ahead and start that project. We have identified at this point that Alliance Auto Gas is the only manufacturer in the United States who is able to convert 33 of the vehicles that the sheriff's office wants to convert of the 50. Another company called IMCO does have certifications for the 2010 Crown Vics, however, they do not have that, they do not have the authority through the, I apologize, I lost my place, the EPA, they don't have the certificates to the EPA to be able to convert the 2006 to 2008. Request from the sheriff's office to award a sole source to Alliance Auto Gas for the turnkey package to convert the 50 Crown Victorias.
This is only for 13 vehicles, is that not correct?
No, sir, this is to do both the 13 that the grant is going to do, and also the remaining number from the $215,000 that was transferred in April.
I guess I was going on the basis of what Chief Deputy Dowdell told me today, is that the sheriff had decided to only go with the 13 vehicles, and that he would not be going for the 50, is that not correct?
I apologize, that wasn't the information that I talked with Mike about, Mike Phillips, but the intent is to start with the 13, but then to carry through after that with the additional vehicles. So, obviously, I don't have that additional information from Chief Dowdell.
Do you want to bring it back to us again?
My apologies, sir.
I mean, do you, we have enough information, is my question a vote on it?
The 215, Dowdell only do 13 vehicles, is that correct?
No, sir, the 215,000 will do all 50 vehicles.
It will. Well, Mr. Chairman, all I can tell you is that I talked earlier this afternoon to Chief Dowdell, because we did have a question about whether or not if they did all 50 vehicles, whether, even though they were going to be able to, and they would be installing it, any repairs, first of all, our vehicle service center would have to be trained and to do those repairs, and then if they were to be moved from one vehicle to another vehicle, they'd have to be trained to do that, and a lot of these vehicles are going on, vehicles are 2006 vehicles, and I was told today by Chief Dowdell that it would only be 13 vehicles that they would be doing, and that the sheriff had not decided that he would go forward with the rest of them. And there's no one here to address that, so if you take action, you may be doing it on incomplete information, because I'm just basing it on what I was told.
If I may, sir?
I think we need to take another look at DS6.
Okay.
$215,000 to convert 50 vehicles, $4,300...
Chairman, I move that we proceed with the agenda.
Don't spend that kind of money on a vehicle almost five years old.
Okay, you want to table this one, right?
I move to proceed with the agenda, yes.
Okay.
Engine it for that.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand what...
Well, the motion was that we proceed with the agenda, meaning we would table that motion, but at present time, is that right, that was the same mosquito?
The motion is to just move on with what we were talking about and move to the next item. We have a request from the EMS Department for approval and agreement with Advanced Ergonomics for a physical ability testing program. Tracy Jackson, Deputy County Manager, will make that presentation.
Good evening, I'm here on behalf of EMS. Advanced Ergonomics Incorporated, or AEI, would be serving as our consultant to help us develop a physical abilities test for our field paramedics. This would help us to determine whether or not, you know, according to the job requirements, their physical conditioning actually allows them to continue to perform their duties. So, our goal would be to implement this for our current employees, for potential applicants, and for employees post-injury, before they return back to work. AEI would be developing the test based on the scientific standards, the job requirements, and actually would come in and perform measurements, and put this together for us, and the contract basically spells out their responsibilities, how they're gonna do that, and what our role will be. Cost-wise, it seems to be very affordable, and something that could be implemented sometime in October, as far as actual on-the-ground testing in terms of developing the actual program.
Will this be for the initial job screening test, or is this a test that would have to be passed periodically to maintain their job, to keep their job?
It would be both.
Would be both?
Yes, actually, we'd be looking at three different classes of employees, or potential, because you've got those folks you haven't hired yet, but you're gonna put them through a program or a test to see if they can meet the requirements, then your current employees to make sure they're maintaining those requirements, and then post-injury for folks that may be injured on the job, or even away from the job, to make sure they can continue doing those functions as a paramedic before they return back to work.
Okay, Mr. Chairman? Question for counsel, you may not be able to tell me right now, but can we terminate someone who fails to pass the PFT, I'm gonna call it the PFT for lack of a better word, or are we gonna be forced to move them into a desk job, and essentially, we, I mean, I guess we've eliminated the liability, but we could end up with... eliminated the liability, but we could end up with a whole lot of people working in desk jobs that we don't need to exist.
If we validate the test to determine that there's some correlation between what we're asking these people to do and what the job requires, it's my opinion that we can acquire that they do that. If we're asking unreasonable things that don't have any job correlation, then we could have a problem. That's one of the reasons for this contract is to get the methodology determined and validation.
I have a question for Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Jackson, that is the intent, is that we are going to perform this validation so that we could terminate, as Mr. Pope was talking about?
Hopefully, for us, that's going to be a last resort, to be honest with you. I think that it'd be a very small percentage of our employees that might fall in that category. I think ideally, it'd be wise to try to give them another opportunity to pass the test if they know that.
No, I understand, give them another opportunity to pass the test, but we.
But ultimately, if they cannot pass the test, basically, we've got questions about their ability to do the job safely.
I mean, we're just somewhere.
The public, their coworkers, so.
We don't want to create an incentive to fail the test, right? I mean, if somebody decides, I'm tired of being on the road, and then I can just fail the test, and then I'll keep my job and my salary, then.
Right, I mean, we like to have productive, healthy employees, and the other part of this program, which is not included in this, but I'll go ahead and mention it, is a physical fitness component. We cannot make that mandatory, we can encourage the physical fitness program, we can provide them the tools and opportunities, but ultimately, it's up to that individual whether they're going to stay physically fit to be able to do the job.
Motivation is to keep your job, right?
Exactly.
Mr. Jackson, this process does validate the test in response to what the attorney, Mr.?
Right.
Okay.
Right, that's the responsibility of Advanced Ergonomics Incorporated.
Okay.
But we're going to, current employees are going to periodically be, take a physical test as to whether they can still do the job?
Correct.
I'm not sure I understood it that way.
Basically, this contract allows this company to provide us with this test, they will develop it for us, we will be the ones implementing the test, and we could do that on an annual basis, we'll come up with a policy for the department. That was the goal, really.
I will say that funds for this were appropriated last year, I believe, is that not correct?
Well, we had discussed using the workers' comp fund.
Okay, but we had some funds set up at one time to appropriate for this purpose, so this is something that we've been planning to do for some time, but got into some issues that kept us from being able to go forward. We've now been able to separate those issues out, and that's the reason, and part of it addresses the agility, the person's ability to perform those tasks that would be required. The physical fitness part of it is still an issue that this does not address.
Any additional questions?
I'd like to ask Mr. Argson, does this seem to satisfy what you were after?
Yeah, it does, I believe it does. And I think it'll lend some credibility, I mean, we, you know, I don't think it was ever our intent for people to go do jumping jacks or something, because that's not what somebody who's going to, you know, carry a stretcher up or down flights of stairs and stuff has to do. So if they can come up with some sort of measurement that is a predictive tool when we hire somebody, that will, that, you know, if they can do this test, there's a good chance they can do the job and not hurt themselves, which we don't want our employees to get hurt, and then, you know, use that same test to confirm that they can continue to do the job safely. We do it with firemen, they have to get recertified so that on the, on skills, so that they don't hurt themselves or others. I think this is just an extension of that, so I'm comfortable with it. And I think this is a professional approach and will probably be more widely accepted than if we had come up with it internally, you know, part of that old, well, if they're a consultant, they must be unbiased, that if we do it in-house, we must be biased. I disagree with that, but perception is reality, and this is one of those cases.
Oh, anything to motion?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to approve. Any questions, go into motion. All in favor of motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed.
County has been awarded some energy funds and that we've put into place several projects, and hopefully will be recipient of others, but one of the things that we do need is a energy policy, and that's what Mr. Lynn Neblock will present and request your approval of a policy on that.
Good evening. As Mr. Mashburn says, we're ongoing with our work on the stimulus grant funding we have, and part of the requirements of the stimulus energy grant that we are currently working on is the adoption of an energy policy for the county. So what you have before you tonight is a request to adopt an energy policy and authorize the county manager to appoint an energy coordinator to manage the implementation and administration of this policy. The proposal is that this duty be delegated to an existing employee by the county manager. The adoption of this policy and the designation of the energy coordinator will ensure that county takes full advantage of not only the current stimulus funding, but also other funding opportunities both now and in the future. Activities of coordinator and implementing this policy are eligible expenses under the current stimulus grant. In addition, there will be additional energy savings associated with this policy. There are many benefits in addition to the cost avoidance and other monetary benefits which will be realized as a result of the implementation of this policy. This would include better air quality, reducing our carbon footprint, good stewardship of the environment, and upgrading our infrastructure and the county facilities, to name a few. The policy will also address the Iredell 2025 strategic plan by encouraging economic vitality with regard to energy efficiency. The policy, in conjunction with energy coordination, will also give us a much better understanding of our future infrastructure needs and allow us to provide much better future capital funding needs when it comes to energy expenditures. I would therefore respectfully request that you approve the proposed energy conservation policy and authorize the county manager to designate an energy coordinator, and I will be glad to address any questions this board may have at this time.
Where are you planning on bringing this person from? Is it someone on your staff now that you feel like you don't need to put full-time into this?
The proposal is to use.
Oh, that was a layup, man, that was a layup question.
To utilize some of our current employees, whoever he feels would be best suited for this position, and to utilize some of our current staff, because as I said, this is part of the requirements of the stimulus grant that we've already accepted and are currently using, and I, for one, did not want to come before this board and ask for a new position, as I do not believe that that would be the thing to do during the current economic situation.
When you shoot birds, do you flush them or just kill them on the ground?
Kill them.
That's what I figured.
I hope that answered your question.
Any more questions, Mr. Neblock?
Very good response, Mr. Neblock. I congratulate you on that response.
Thank you.
We're going to have our own energies, Art. Now, I couldn't pick a better man for the job.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we proceed with the agenda.
Well, we need to take action on this one, don't we? If we're going to be in compliance with the, how do you word that?
With the administration portion of the energy grants.
Yep.
Any questions regarding the motion?
Apparently, my motion's out of order, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, well, I mean, we can vote on that motion, but I think we need to take action on this one, that's my perspective.
I withdraw the motion.
Okay.
Okay, I'll make a motion for approval of this request, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I rise in opposition to the motion. Be glad to explain myself, if anybody wants me to.
It's really not necessary, but go ahead.
I figured it wouldn't be necessary.
Will the position go away, or the funding go, when the funding goes away, does this position go away?
Well, I got an idea, Mr. Neblock's going to do it, it's not going to get any more pay for it.
It goes into his department, and that money can be used to pay for somebody else.
If, well, I did, I'm sorry, Mr. Mashburn, go ahead. All I was going to say is, if the, the position, and again, we're not talking about a new position, we're talking about adding additional responsibility to a current position, if it's successful in accomplishing what the stated goals are here, then there will be long-term benefits to, that will positively impact the county's budget. That's the purpose. Obviously, if it's not successful, then there'd be no continued need for the position, but if it continues to be successful and accomplishes what its stated goals are, then it would be justifiable to continue with it. That's the most direct response I can give to this. Just recently, some of the things that we've been able to accomplish, obviously using someone else's money, but it's things that the county has been able to benefit from. The energy savings that we'll have, it's too early in the game to know exactly what those savings are going to be, but we do know that we have more light than we had before, and if, and there are places that we're not using light that we were using before, or as much light as we were using before, and that's all is a part of what we've been able to accomplish, but that's only a tip of some of the things that could be accomplished. If someone was dedicated to being able to identify what those areas are, what the resources are, that can help us to accomplish that, and then to schedule the work to get the work done.
Okay.
If I might add to that to try to address the question, hopefully, we do have some funding that we can use to initially fund this position, or help to fund this position, but hopefully, we'll have enough and find enough energy savings and cost avoidance in future budgets to more than offset the cost after the federal money goes away. Currently, in this year's budget for electricity, water, gas, and fuel oil, we have a little over $1.1 million budgeted in this current year budget, which we, in my opinion, spend a lot more time looking at cell phone bills, which are probably a lot less money in the overall budget than we do looking at energy bills. So hopefully, by being able to get a handle on which buildings need upgrading on HVAC systems, prioritize that for future capital needs, so forth and so on, we can see a continued saving as time goes on by utilizing this policy and the services of that position.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Moore, do we have a motion?
Motion for approval.
Okay, motion to approve. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed.
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, item G is a presentation of the 2011 market and present use value schedules, which is a prerequisite to the reappraisal that will be done in 2011. Steve Irvin, Tax Assessor's Office, will make that presentation, and basically, I think we're just calling for a public hearing on this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mashburn, and members of the board. Yes, you have a small hook before you there. I'm just presenting this tonight for your consideration, it's both the market schedule and the present use schedule that we'll use to implement the 2011 reevaluation. We also want to call for a hearing, a public hearing on September 21st to have public input on this. You have any questions, other?
We were to meet early on the.
Well, it was my recommendation in an email that was sent out, that the board consider meeting at four o'clock on the 21st prior to the hearing that evening, just so that you can, Mr. Irvin can go over this with you, answer any questions you may have, so that when you go into the hearing, would be better prepared for that. We have no idea what kind of interest will be generated, and without having something before the hearing, you're not going to be as prepared for responses and so forth as you may want to be, so that was the recommendation that you, and it was recommended at four o'clock. Of course, it's your decision whether to have one, and if you're going to have one when you want to have it. If you decide to do it at four o'clock, then the chairman would just adjourn tonight's meeting until four o'clock on that, at that time and date.
Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I would encourage any and everybody, if they want to, if have questions, to email me either directly or through Mr. Mashburn. Directly would be just great, and that way, I could be prepared. If you have specific questions you want me to address on that work session on the 21st, and I'm looking forward to that, because I do want to have some interaction with you on this. There's a lot of information in here, and it can be confusing, and I want you to be able to understand just where we're going with this, and hopefully, I can give you some ideas of where we think we're going. Of course, again, until January 1st, it's definitely estimates.
Do we need a motion for a public hearing, am I correct?
You need to motion for the public hearing, and then if you are going to have a work session, you need to set the time for that.
I'll make the motion for the public hearing on Tuesday, September 21st, 2010, at 7:00 PM, and then wait for some discussion on this other business.
Okay, any questions regarding that motion? If not all in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed. All right, now the discussion will be on the four o'clock meeting.
Yeah, I think we ought to avail ourselves of that opportunity, Mr. Chairman. We may not consume that much time doing it, but I would rather see us have ample time, and that's not to needlessly burden Mr. Irvin, but I would rather have us, see us have more than adequate time, rather than be hard-pressed to get all our questions answered before we come out here and hold a public hearing.
Any other comments, concerns? Do a motion for.
Motion for four o'clock.
Motion for four o'clock. Any questions regarding that motion? If not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed. Thanks, sir.
Memo number 11, a client of Attorney Maddox paid $70 in revenue stamped soon June the 11th to have a deed recorded, the actual cost of that was $7, so they're eligible for a refund of $63. This does require board approval, although the register of deeds has reviewed this and is recommending it, does require the board to approve it before the $63 can be returned to the property owner.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman. Okay, motion to approve. All in favor of motion, please say aye.
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 Last item is approval of the August 17, 2010 minutes.
Motion to approve minutes.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those who vote. Announcements... Basically, it's occurring on boards and commissions. Professional advocacy committee, three announcements. Appointments to board and commission. Animal grievance committee, one appointment. Anyone for animal grievance? How to advocacy academy for substance abuse awareness and recovery? One appointment. Any appointments for that?
Oh, I'll confess, Mr. Chairman, I forgot to call the lady.
Okay.
I'll make myself a note here.
Make motion to table.
Yes, motion to table, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any questions regarding that motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'm finished, business. New business? County manager's report?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have a report this evening, but I do have some items for closed session.
Okay. Closed session is GS 143, that's 318, 111, section 86. First nail. Anyone in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those who vote.
Mr. Secretary, I actually need to be tagged as a result of the personnel meeting. Uh, we will adjourn the meeting until four o'clock PM on Tuesday, September 21st. And that is 2010. Okay? On favor of that, P C I? Aye.